All right, it's seven o'clock folks, let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the Father, and ever since.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go right to Mr. Smith.
That is not on.
How you doing?
Doing okay, how are you?
Good. That's our, um...
Account. Our auditor.
Yep, our auditor. Pull over some view. And we, do we have, we have a picture or just a voice?
Just, well, just the voice.
Okay, good, so I don't have to break my neck. Good for that. Um, Ron, if you, if you wanna give an overview, and then we could ask some questions if that's all right?
Sure, so when we talked back in December, the audit, remember, there was two audit pieces going on. There was the town audit, which we talked about with your financial position, fund balance, and things like that. Then there was a single audit piece of it, which is the federal compliance piece of it with all the projects that you've got going on there. That was still being in process when we were talking back in December. And one of the things that we had talked about on, uh, on that same conversation was getting Liz's help, you know, just for support for accounting support. And, and it was pretty noticeable when we were doing the single audit, you know, how things were getting posted and, you know, and how the grants were being handled, the drawdown requests and all that. There's a lot of work, you guys, you know, that went into, you know, the, uh, you know, the, for lack of a better word, the single audit piece of that, making sure all the money was where it was supposed to be, all the drawdowns and all that. And, you know, through the help of Darlene and through Nemrick and Wendy, we were able to take this thing across the finish line, but I think a lot of it was real harder than what it should have been. And I know, you know, Liz reached out for a lot of support and, uh, and, and we gave it to her, Darlene gave it to her through Nemrick, and I think it's just kind of a way, you guys, really, you know, to, you know, to really kind of end 22 and start 23 is that Liz is just gonna need some support to sit in that chair and do that job. You know, and quite frankly, you know, just, uh, just making sure, you know, that, uh, you know, that everything's where it's supposed to be. And that single audit was a struggle, and she inherited a struggle too. In Liz's defense, she inherited a struggle, things weren't where they, you know, where they were supposed to be. And, you know, and I think we've got a good jump on 23 and getting all the information from USDA and a lot of other things like that, you know, that we did, you know, knowing that 23 audit was gonna be on us. So I guess really that's where the conversation starts right now, is really just being supportive of, you know, Liz, making sure she gets the accounting help and making sure everything's where it needs to be. And, you know, and a management letter that you saw with some of those comments, you know, were just, for, for lack of a better way to say it, some continued struggles that the town had, but the single audit really kind of like, uh, accentuated some of those struggles you all.
Okay. Do you wanna talk about the management letter?
Yeah, the management letter that you guys, you guys all have in front of you?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so if you look on pretty much the second page, a lot of it, as I said, that some of these were repeat comments, you know, but just, you know, just the, you know, the, the comment in itself and, and specifically you guys, you know, the one at the very bottom of the page with debt activity, water and sewer funds, those were predominantly where the, you know, where the, the federal funds were being posted into the town GL. You know, and those were, that, that was the big one that really, we, we really had to kind of untangle that one right there to, to really arrive at, putting that single audit to bed and signing off on the town audit, finalizing it. And I think a lot of it was just accounting, you know, every one of those were just accounting, you know, functions. And the bank reconciliation, certainly the first one that you guys, you know, have for comment there. You know, just some of that stuff and how the, you know, the, how the, uh, like, like the re, the, the, the drawdowns or request for reimbursements to get paid, you know, from USDA and from some of the other funding places, some of the bond drawdowns and all that. They were, the, the accounting form just wasn't, you know, just, just, it just, it just wasn't, wasn't good, you know, is the best way I can say it. There's a lot of effort, you know, to, you know, that was made, you know, to clean a lot of that stuff up. And I know that there's a lot of effort that's gone into 23 to hopefully expedite the 23 audit, so we're not talking, you know, uh, months, you know, after, you know, the end of the year. You know, end of the year, like the, like January and February, you know, with town audit, things dragging on. You know, there's been a lot of work that I know that's been done in the 23 audit, but just accounting, really just a crowning in some of the struggles that you had and really giving Liz the support to really, you know, quite frankly, try to get out in front of these comments that are in this letter.
Uh, hi Ron, this is Jason Kupal, I'm over in the corner here. Um, I appreciate the fact that you've recognized Liz's work on this. Let me ask you, can you recommend any steps we can take to assist Liz or to, you know, make these problems less severe?
Coaching, she's gonna need some coaching. We sat down, all of us, Joe, you know, Nemrick, Heather, you know, Liz, it's, I think it's just gonna take coaching, you know, and just kind of making her aware, building, you know, literally building her almost like a daily, weekly, monthly to-do list, you know, to go through. I think that's the big thing and really kind of being supportive and giving them some coaching, 'cause she's gonna need some help, you guys, and some coaching, I think is the best way to do it. And really kind of like working with her to develop in that punch list. I really think that'll help and really kind of gives her like a calendar of affairs, you know, during the course of a day, course of a week, course of a month, everything she needs to do, really to keep the town books in order.
Well, let me ask you, Ron, if, by coaching, do you, would that necessarily include perhaps some initial training?
Yes, training, I, I, it's the same thing, I'm just using the word coach, training, correct.
Okay, and by that, do you, that would be training on the systems we use and, and, uh, you know, by the, by the developers of those systems, would that be how it would work?
Yeah, Nemrick, I know, I know that Darlene's been working with Liz on doing exactly that for training. And I think in addition to training is just kind of, like I say, just working with her on the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month features, you know, with closing out your books, you know, and that's where I think the coaching, you know, part comes in as well as the training. The, you know, the two will complement each other, and I think Liz will, uh, I think Liz will be able to do it, so.
Excellent.
Are there any one of these particular, um, comments more, um, more troubling than another one? I mean, there's, the purchase, the...
The bank, the bank recs is certainly one that you could look at and say, wow, you know, we gotta stay out in front of that one, 'cause, 'cause cash is king. And I think that the struggles with the bank reconciliations were real because of some of the other issues, you know, of how things were getting posted and, you know, and reconciled in your general ledger. It basically made those bank reconciliations more than challenging, to which we and, you know, Darlene, Nemrick, you know, helped Liz, you know, with that, with that area. That's the one you really wanna focus on, and that's really where I think that the training and the coaching comes in right there. I think if you can get everything posted monthly, you know, and, uh, and balanced and reconciled monthly, you know, that just comes with Liz's comfort level, with, uh, you know, with your, with your software and, you know, and just showing her what to do on a month-to-month basis. Lot of those, lot, remember, a lot of your deposits come in through electronically. So if you're getting paid, you know, it's like, well, what's this one for? What's that one for? And that was really kind of a struggle, is, you know, it's really kind of like, you know, recognizing a deposit and really what's drawdown and what's reimbursement or what that money was for coming into the town. And, you know, like I said, that, 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 if, if your, if your general ledger wasn't going to be, it wasn't being reconciled and where that money was coming in and specifically what it was for, that's gonna lead to problem with the bank reconciliations. And like I said, those are the two problematic areas that we really had, you know, to spend some time with.
Okay. Questions?
Uh, yes, this is Glenn, Mayor Ron. Under per, purchasing, the purchase orders, can you describe the, when I read that, it sounded like the, the purchase order and the invoices, we had some trouble lining those up?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes we had invoices with no purchase order, sometimes the invoices, you know, came in before the purchase order, so you guys had a system, you just weren't using it, and that was pretty evident. And a lot of that was pretty evident during that federal, you know, during like the federal testing that we did, some of our expense testing, you know, that was an area clearly that you guys were following your process.
And, and I'd follow on to my question on that because I think we saw that we needed, that we had some of that issue of invoice and purchase orders, and we, we tried to fix it with an approach of a blanket purchase order that would, that would cover us and, so was, can you speak to that? It was, did it seem like?
So, so it was almost like your purchase order was nothing more than a cover page to pay a bill in some cases. And a purchase order is designed to allow department heads to go out and order, you know, and, and have a process in place where that order's placed in, your system has a special feature for it, you know, and, and, and it's a process. Your purchase order comes first, invoice comes in, gets matched up against the purchase order bill, gets paid. It was almost like that, that process certainly wasn't consistent all the time. And, and literally in some cases, it was like the purchase order was nothing more than an account payment and cover sheet to approve a bill.
Okay, that helps me understand that better. One, one other question while then, and I'll, I'll go back to the, 'cause it looked like there were six findings from that letter, basically, and I'm, I'm going back to having the, the first one under bank, bank reconciliations and recommending that, you know, within 30 days, uh, you reconcile with all the checks. Is that, uh, just, do you find that shows up, uh, in when you're doing audits, I, I'm just...
That's the biggest problem in the world of government right there, is just the struggle to reconcile bank accounts, biggest problem.
Yeah, I, so I felt better saying, if that was just us and everyone else was easily getting there, I'm saying, I wanna know what the secret is.
Listen, we, we, we do like 350 audits, and I will go easily and say, typically with clients, if there's a problematic area in the world of government, I'd say almost as much as, you know, 25% of them struggle with bank reconciliations just because of transition, new people learning the system, software issues, conversion issues, things like that. You know, bank reconciliations, you are not alone in that, the biggest problematic area, you know, that we have, that we deal with in the world of government out there, and we do a lot of government. You know, so that's a problematic area for everybody, and that's one, like I said, we really wanna get out in front of it and try to avoid that from having a repeat, repeat occurrence, so.
I agree, good, thank you.
Other questions?
So we're ready to start 23, we got a good jump on it through 22. Sorry it took so long to bring that single audit across the finish line, but you guys got a good, you guys got an accurate product, and we'll continue to work with Liz and Joe to make sure that you guys get good business information.
Ron, I got a question for you real quick.
Sure.
Do you know how many, uh, for the, the POs you talked about, do you know how many, um, you found in your testing that were wrong?
I don't, I do not, but I can get you that listing, I can tell you that there was more than six, I can tell you that.
All right.
Other questions? Um, can you give a, overall, what do you think of where we stand, the position we're in now?
Financially, I think you guys are fine. One of the things that we talked about with Joe and Liz, and then that's really where, you know, it came to like this reconciling, you guys were losing a lot of your own money, you know, to, to try to basically pay for all the projects that you got going on, and your reimbursements were coming in slow. Stay ahead of those reimbursements, get those things in timely, you know, so that you guys are getting reimbursed and we're not looking around to scurry on who's paying for what, what we're waiting for to pay for all these projects, you know, with these reimbursement requests. Stay on top of that, get them in more timely, that's the biggest thing. And, you know, and, and, and the, the, the woman who was great to work with at USDA made a similar comment to you all, so.
Good. Other questions? Good. All right, Ron, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for helping us out.
Thank you, Ron.
We'll be talking 23 pretty soon, you guys all be well.
All right, thank you, Ron.
See you, Ron, bye-bye.
Okay. We'll get back to the meeting unless there's any additional...
Um, yeah, just a little bit, so this is, this is, we're not talking, um, this year, we're talking last year, right? We're talking more than a year ago for this, this audit, fiscal year 22. Um, we did address a lot of the, the purchase order issues that Ron talked about, though the next audit will, will prove me right or wrong with that. Um, in terms of reconciliation, I talked to Liz about that today, asking, and she said the last few months are on time. So, um, as we transition from Jenny, who'd been here for 15 years, to Liz, who is just here, there's bumps in the road, but, you know, we're getting there.
Okay, well, we've got, obviously got some, some goals there.
We've work to do, no doubt about it.
Okay. All right, amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to include one single item on, under executive session. Um, that would be a personnel matter pursuant to 313A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other amendments you have? Couple of regular... I have three.
Want me to make them?
Sure.
I'll do them one at a time, there's three under new business. Uh, one of you, under new business, C, Building Better Community Grants Applications. We have two applications that the Economic Development Committee is forwarding to the Select Board, the recommendation to, uh, go forward and let them apply for the grant. And, uh, also, there's a D, the Truck Loan Discussion. And, uh, we'd like to do that all in one motion, by the way.
Fine with me.
And, uh, E, there, there was some, uh, scrap sold, and there's a cash deposit that we need this way.
Uh, move to amend, uh, the agenda to allow discussions of items C, D, E as, as identified by Glenn under new business.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll do that. All right, so, approval of the minutes of July 25th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of July 25th, 2023 is written.
Okay. Additions, deletions, corrections?
For all the multiple pages of minutes, I only had one on page two that I, I thought, under Town Manager Report, the third bullet where it said spoke with Bruce Meecham, referenced Newtown Garage. I, I don't want anyone to think we were, uh, we were moving ahead with the Newtown Garage. It was, uh, it was reference site prep for Newtown Garage is what the meeting with Mr. Meecham was for. So just was looking for that.
Essentially, it's research, we haven't gone any farther than that.
And site prep, but didn't want anyone to read the minutes and think we were forging ahead with the Newtown Garage. Uh, we're, we're looking to see if where we wanna put it is, is feasible, probably the best way, so.
I think that's the most pages I've ever turned.
Well, I, I looked and I said, this is, this is an unbelievable set of minutes, it's a lot of pages, but that, that one there would just clear that up.
Everybody okay with that change?
Yeah.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. All right, if public shows up, we'll give them a little time. Department heads? Nate?
Regular group, being so speedy, it's a cleaning up, still ready to sell, especially, I'm right. First gun, a little, little bit apart, not much, six little pickles, one on West Street, uh, Constance Street. I can get one up there, the ambulance, that's an incentive, pop, it's on Constance Street. Been ready to go, we got some plans together, over there on 69.
When's that gonna happen?
When it shoot, I gotta go with the property owners out there, 'cause we're always gonna have to pull the shut down. We need to make sure they're on the good side, really, getting it out, so I'm hoping for Wednesday. That way it could then, you know, jealous.
Wednesday next week?
Yeah.
What is the call? We're just getting ready for culture.
Yeah, so I guess it's, yeah.
Okay.
Just, just a question, with, with school gonna be opening soon, are we gonna try to paint a few crosswalks so that, that we can see them, I, I, there, there's a few critical ones with school opening up soon, if we can get to those.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Ron. There's also one I know, I don't know if you were aware of this, on, uh, on Main Street, right at the corner of Allen, the crosswalk there, first, someone knocked the sign down in the middle of the street, and that was leaning up against my fence for a while, and then the crosswalk could probably use a little freshening up too.
Well, yeah, no, we usually do it, uh, as one of the good crosswalks, and crosswalk signs, the signs are unfortunately, uh, one of the...
Yeah. I'm wondering if maybe the one, unless it's required by state law, I'm wondering if putting the ones in the middle of the crosswalk like that aren't just going to lead to more expense for us. I mean, as long as the crosswalk is identified and we have the big signs on the sidewalks.
I think it's mostly, yeah, it's just mostly for people who get sign blind, you know, so that...
It's, it'd be clear, in the middle, in the middle of the crosswalks, the crosswalk is painted on the, on the pavement, there is, there is a sign on the sidewalk, a large sign that shows the crosswalk, and in the middle of the crosswalk, there's usually a very thin strip of a sign that also, you know, is meant as a warning, and those are getting hit by vehicles.
And I, I think, refresh my memory, but didn't, didn't the chief get those as a, it was a grant? It was a grant that, that we had, it's the reason we put them in there, but also, I mean, in the crosswalks. I mean, I don't know if you stood at the, the bus station crosswalk to try to go across, and there's hardly any, anyone ever even slowing down. You, you wait, nobody's stopping and following the crosswalk where you let people in the crosswalk. It, it's...
Really, I've never, I've never, I just see obviously.
I, I was, uh, when I went down Friday for the Fairhaven returns thing, I stood there and had eight vehicles just...
Right.
And, and I've noticed and been paying attention, it's the exception, some people do, but it's the exception. I think that's why the chief went and got the grant and put the thing, when you were talking about sometime the sign blind, uh, to try to...
Right, I mean, I, I've already experienced it because I crossed that crosswalk on North Main to walk my dog, and same thing. They'll just, no, no one is stopping, you have to wait for clearance in the traffic.
You need to have it clear, 'cause they're not gonna stop. Would you want it?
I mean, I, it might be, you know, it, it might be a, uh, a good thing for maybe Dale or the chief to look out for is that if, you know, people are in the crosswalk and there are cars going through it, I mean, that is a violation.
There's some people that just stand back between cars too and wait, and sometimes you don't see them that time. And it just gotta, they gotta make themselves noticed also.
That's, that's why they, the bump outs are, that's why they made them. Anything else, Nate? Any other questions? Still mowing?
Everything, everything's been touched, we got some trimmers, we got some branches, we can help them. But we'll, we'll be back, guys, we got more.
Might not rain, might not rain tomorrow for five minutes.
Yeah, it's the most I see, I don't know.
Okay, thanks. You're up.
Uh, we'll be at the police chief, just one second. Uh, the report was in the packets, but just as a, as an overview, uh, we had, the police had 22 traffic and municipal violations issued, eight warnings over the last couple of weeks, three parking violations and two car crashes. Uh, 16 more sets of fingerprints were done here in, in Fairhaven. Manager's office, we did get the municipal energy resilience program grant, um, finished, that's submitted to the state.
What does that entail, Chuck?
That is going to upgrade, it's gonna upgrade Town Hall in terms of HVAC. Um, we did put in a new, the new boilers downstairs being installed now. Uh, this grant will help with HVAC, so air conditioning, um, insulation, and then it's also, uh, for ADA improvement. So the ramp at the back door for the police department can actually be ADA accessible.
Will we be able to get any heat pumps in that, to get heat?
Yes, the entire building. We have quotes for the second floor, um, this grant will cover it all, no match, so. No, it's huge. I also reached out to a company to, uh, to talk about solar panels and then, um, energy storage. 'Cause it, it just makes sense if somebody's gonna throw some free money at us, let's see what we can do, you know, in the future, you know, get some good stuff that, that'll help us down the line, so.
Can that roof support, uh, solar panels, you think?
I don't know. There's a lot of weight out there.
It can support it, they rarely will do slate roofs. They just, they're afraid of all the solar, they, they don't know how to deal with a slate roof, and so they just say no. I mean, I've investigated it for myself, I, I don't think it's...
A couple of different times.
I don't think it's that they don't know how to deal with it, but slates, the slates, they're, they're, they're ginger underneath there, so they, they gotta have something to...
They just, they're afraid of...
It's a roof, it's a roof, for crying out loud.
I know, but when you fasten them on, with the slate, they're gonna crack and split, they're gonna cause more problems. That's kinda why they stay away from it.
Could the solar panels, 'cause instead of just the building, like, I think at Stafford, and your solar panels, it works to shade your own solar panels, like where your parking is here and, uh, on the other side. And, and down at the, from, um, at National, where you were talking about a problem with evaporation, could we possibly, if we got this for solar, would that get our solar panels over the top that would serve?
We talked about that, yeah.
Right, dual purpose? I'm just saying, did it have to be, did we write it for just the building, or can we?
I'll have to ask about wastewater, 'cause to be honest with you, I didn't, it was a new facility, so I wasn't thinking energy resilience up there, but I can have to...
That was, yeah, we talked about that.
I carry this, was looking at something like that, if there's an opportunity, so.
We did release, uh, talking about the water plant, we released a bid to get the water plant roof replaced. We had no bidders, I re-released that bid, that's due, I think, the 21st of this month, again. Uh, the kickoff meeting for the lights in the park and the parking ride is, upgrades is tomorrow morning at 10:00. I don't know what that's supposed to mean. Pre-con, I met with the Historical Society earlier, well, mid-light, mid-week last week. Um, they're gonna, they pulled together a, a little, um, setup for the corner over here, the historical corner is what they're calling it. Um, but they're also gonna dig up some, some of the old artifacts from the town, from the, when this was the town high school. Um, pictures, photographs, you know, designs of the building, things that kind of, you know, bring the history of, of Town, of Fairhaven and the school, you know, back to the town. So they're gonna supply us with a few things to hang on the walls. Uh, restroom trailer, I did find a couple of toilets, which, they were installed. We still need one more toilet and one faucet, um, to go in, and then it should be up and running. We do have somebody cleaning it now. And back to wastewater, we need to do a 20-year evaluation on our collection system. Uh, this is something that the state requires of us, we're gonna have to release an RFP for that. Uh, Kerry's working on it, and the state has a 50% forgiveness loan on that. So, um, we'll see something bubbling through here in the next, in the next month and a half, two months, for, for collection.
Very, why not, why not, just a hundred percent?
Cause it's the government.
Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the question. And that's what I got for you.
Anything to tell me? What do you think, something, pipe right up? Old business, rec guys are not here, we'll go to the sidewalk. Let's take it here, we'll talk to them.
I had one discussion at the last meeting, the board was curious about getting some renderings and finding ways that we could develop, or finding ways to develop some renderings so that the board could see the project. I did a little bit of Google research, landscape design software is ranging from free to twenty-nine hundred dollars for purchase. I did call Castleton University to try to find a student to do it for us, I still haven't received an answer back. I didn't see a landscape design course, so I reached out to a few folks. We'll see what happens. DNK did provide a cost, they said it's gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars to provide renderings.
Too much.
Twenty-five hundred for renderings?
Yes.
This is just to give us a better idea of what, what that little green space will look like.
Your thoughts and your opinion on this? Looks like you're biting your tongue, so I just want you to.
I mean, I've never had much, much luck with Castleton. I know we've, there's always that thought of, let's get a volunteer, but I've, I've never one time have I really found somebody. DNK's twenty-five hundred dollars, it's less than I thought it was gonna be and landscaping software, yeah, we can find something for free, but the question is who's gonna do it? Who's gonna work with our free program? I'm certainly not landscape architect, so.
DNK is the design engineers and. Seems like they could work something up for us with the money we're paying them. That doesn't include twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars.
You would think, but.
You want me to talk to them?
Yeah.
Give them a ha?
Yeah, what is this? It's, so my, so I bite my tongue, the concern is that this, this, this project has gone over budget just because of inflation and it will continue to go up. So to spend money on renderings, I mean, this is one of those nice to haves, but it's, you know, it's up to you guys if you wanna see a picture.
I recognize your concerns, but I mean, for example, what the discussion we had at the last meeting regarding the colored concrete, that would have been a fifteen thousand dollar investment and I think that while I understand that these projects were green lighted by previous boards and we're trying to move forward on them, when you're asking us to make decisions on these kind of micro issues, we need to be able to contemplate what, you know, what they look like and whether they add value and all of that, so, you know, I think that that's gonna be a problem. I understand, I think that, I don't think that we varied any from, from the overall scheme of the project, but I think that if you're asking us to have, to vote on these, these items when we can't, when we can't see them and we have no, I mean, no idea what we're investing or what it's gonna look.
But if we spent money finding out, that's where I, I'm having problems.
Well, I mean, I'm.
Spending money on.
Well, I mean, I'm just worried, I'm just gonna be worried that we, that we may be, end up being penny wise and pound foolish and that we don't, and that we just, we, you know, if, and this is, I mean, you know, this is a very large project, it's very expensive and I think that we, as a select board, should have the full measure of, of resources necessary to understand what we're moving forward with and, you know, I mean, other than that, then we really don't, I mean, if, if we don't have that, then, you know, what role do we really have? We're just gonna be making educated guesses.
And my only, my only comment on that is for them to even know, see, I'm trying to understand why, if DuBois and King group is creating the sidewalk and we tell them we want X number of tables, this many doors, trees, something like that, part of them making the bid and everything else is them bringing us the rendering, I'm, I'm thinking they have that and I'm looking at it in front of me, but I'm not paying.
Right, that's right.
I wanna see a rendering, I'm not so sure I should be spending.
Well, no, exactly.
Because the engineers that are doing it, don't they have to have, how are their people gonna go in and put the thing in if they don't have a?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, to your point Glenn, I mean, that's what I was a little bit perplexed about, because usually when you have a project of this scope that's being put in, that's part of the pro, that's part of the cost is, because we, you know, and it's not only for our purposes, we wanna be able to show the rest of the town exactly what we're doing. So I'm not sure why those didn't come with the project to begin with and now why they're asking us for more money.
I really, I think that's legitimate, that's absolutely, I, Joe, I think they should.
I mean, what we got was that, that kind of like very generic thing with like a cityscape in the background, I mean, that, that's just not, that, that's not.
I don't get why they don't think they, that we deserve that, I guess is what we're saying.
I can ask, I can ask the company to do it for free.
Well, no, tell, bring them here, put them on and let us talk to them.
How'd you make a bid for a project if you didn't sketch the thing?
They gotta have some sort of an idea, somebody's gotta have some sort of an idea, what kind, what do you want there for a tree? You know, how many trees do you want and where do you want? Somebody, somebody should be able to.
We wanna see what we're.
Make a drawing.
So the drawings, Rich, were, we looked at them on the screen and we saw the trees and we knew what type of trees and what type of flowers and where the paths were and how many, how many, a rendering is different and they're not, they're not gonna do it for free. I can bring them, I can, so I can bring them, they're gonna charge us per hour, cause it will be an additional fee. They don't, they're not, we don't have a ton of money, all of our projects are done through grants, most of the projects.
Understood, understood.
Because we don't have the cash.
But, but again.
We always, we always try to take little bits where we can to save money and every little bit helps because we don't have the money to do it ourselves.
But my question is, is why would they have not thought that we would have needed this? I mean, it's everything, you know, that, you know, I've never heard of a project like this where all we get are these two dimensional, you know, overhead view, you know, drawings and not at least an idea of what things are looking at, because you're asking us to, you know, with that colored concrete issue, we can't, we can't, I couldn't even contemplate what it was from those drawings. If it was three dimensional and you said, hey, this is the point we're looking at, hey, we can put some blue color on here, okay, fine, but I mean, I just don't think that, you know, if you're, if we're being asked to make these decisions, we can do it without more information and so I agree with, you know, Bob, that maybe we should talk to them and see what we can come up with because, you know, putting out twenty-five hundred more dollars for this, and I mean, and for twenty-five hundred dollars, how many more, how many renderings are we gonna get? A full set just for the area we're talking about, you know, about, what is, you know?
So if the board wants renderings, we can, we can have that done. If the board wants them to come in to talk to them, so that way they do renderings, that's gonna cost you twenty-five hundred dollars plus their time to come in and talk. I'm just trying to keep this as close to budget as I can, so.
It's fine, I, don't be apologetic.
They won't do it for free is what I'm getting at.
Well, I, what are they doing for us besides taking grant money from us?
Well, there's designing the project.
Yeah, so part of the design is that we need to know exactly what it's gonna look like.
They've gotta be able to explain to us what they're gonna put in there and show us, that's not rendering, that's not.
It's, it's kinda irritating.
You've been trying to get in there.
Oh, I know, but like, I'm trying to hear about this, but you guys' blueprints, project ready? So I mean, like any contractor.
But here's the deal, we're not, we're not a contractor.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, I'm not a contractor either, but I looked at blueprints and everything else. Contractor will set the plans, we go through them, like anything else, it doesn't matter what it is, it costs extra money, doesn't matter if it's water lines or, like if you're building a house, you're not gonna give them a three D model, a total of forty sticks on the house. You know what I mean, they're gonna charge you more. I'm not trying to be blunt about this, but if you guys want a three D look at it, you gotta bite bullet. It's only, I mean, it's money at the end of the day, but either you wanna go forward or you wanted us to keep.
I mean, I could understand.
Pushing forward, you know what I mean, keep pushing or kicking the can down the road.
I could understand that more in the context of individual construction, you know, because, you know, perhaps that's, that is, Rich probably knows much more about this than I ever could know about this, but when you're doing a municipal improvement project like this, I mean, I think one of, and you're asked to, you know, to approve such a micro, so microscopic, you know, upgrades to it, you can't do it with those points and that's the problem here. And, you know, again, it's, I don't think that it's unreasonable to expect when you put, when you do a project of this scope, that you're going to get a better idea of what's there. I don't think that's unreasonable. And again, I don't, this is not anyone's fault in this room, it's just, it's just a question of, you know, why, if they could answer, why would this have not been part of the, part of the deal? Or was there ever an opportunity for us to, to purchase that or, and did we decline to do so?
It would be that, we declined to do so. We didn't decline, we just didn't put it in the bid.
See, if it wasn't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring them in here and beat them up if we didn't ask for it or, they gave us exactly, they gave us exactly what we asked for and now we're asking for something.
We're not asking for a lot. That is, we're not, we're not asking for a lot. They've got that program sitting on their computer, they've got, they've got our plan sitting in that computer, it ain't a lot of time and for the service of doing, it's starting to, like, it's starting to make me mad that, that kind of a service, I mean, take care of your customer, we're the customer. And, you know, there's other people. We don't ever have to use them again if they're gonna be, if they're gonna be jerks about it. I, I, I'm starting to not understand why this isn't a big deal. This is not a big deal, this is a little colored ink.
May I suggest that maybe, Bob, that we should table this discussion for right now and maybe you should speak to them and let them know how you feel, if you're willing to do it. I mean, it may, it may not accomplish anything, but at least it puts it on the table.
I won't make any friends, but I do that quite well. But I, I just, I just, I mean, we're not talking about a lot.
It is above and beyond, I'll grant that.
I just would caution, is this the same DuBois and King, we still need to meet with and work on our lighting in the park and our park and ride or are we all done?
And, and so they're, they're making, they're making a bunch of money on us and a little bit, a little bit of service is not unreasonable. It's not unreasonable. I think, I mean, I don't see why.
I wanna, I wanna understand, I don't, I'm not ready to throw DuBois and King into the bus.
They will be here tomorrow, um, will they be here tomorrow?
For your meeting?
They'll be here on the tenth.
Sorry, I gotta work.
Which is Thursday.
Yep. What time? There at ten o'clock tomorrow? Well, let's, yeah, let's move on, we're just, we're beating.
It sounds like right now we're not telling you to get the renderings.
No, I didn't hear any.
I didn't, I didn't hear.
No, we're not, no, we don't wanna.
We're gonna, we're gonna have some more discussion.
We don't wanna spend the money, we want them, we want them to, to take care of their customers. Think of the money they're making.
They're making quite a bit.
I think I would emphasize that. But anyways, let's move on. Planning commission member discussion.
So I put out, I blasted out some advertisements on Facebook just saying, hey, planning commission's looking for two members, if you're interested, please reach out to myself or I think I said another commission member, so I didn't get any responses for the planning commission.
And the planning commission still feels, cause how we started this discussion, we're saying, hey, look, for right now, to have a corn, cause you only need three for a corn, when it's five versus four, when it's seven. I heard last time that the planning commission is requesting that we change their number to five. You can always.
They have requested the thing as far as I know.
Oh, then as the chair, you're gonna, I would, before we ever make a decision, right? Cause I thought that's how it was brought up here.
They have, and it's, it's certainly within our, our bailiwick, the select board's bailiwick to, to make a workable committee, so.
Right, but I mean, I, I hate going without the input of that committee, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision without the input.
We have a meeting next week. If you wanna.
I moved the table, this decision, I just wanna make sure I'm not assuming I'm making their life easier.
Yeah, I.
And then find out the majority of the planning commission wants to know what, the select board is doing, changing their number.
No, they wouldn't, I don't think they would feel that way, but, but it's worth asking outright and. Communication's key, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next, our next meeting.
So our next meeting, cause then.
You'll have, you'll either have, you'll either have no or a formal request, how about that? We will, if the rec people come in, we'll go back, is there anything we can discuss that is pertinent to the recreation committee without those guys here, the people here or?
So I, I gotta, I dropped this on the agenda because I talked to Luke over the phone last week and he said, I'm gonna come in and ask for more things. I said, okay, I'll, I'll put it on the agenda. And he's not, maybe he forgot or he got busy, but I wanted to touch base very quickly about it. Nate's working on the restroom trailer, there's still a meeting on the fourteenth and then the twenty-eighth for the, the new rec committee.
Okay, that, you're gonna.
When is that, Joe, and where?
Fourteenth, uh, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, it's in this room and I think they said seven o'clock.
See, there, there's a conflict with, with the BCA meeting, tend to be scheduled for fourteenth in this room, there's a board, I think there might be a zoning board of adjustment. I'm just saying, it might get a little crowded in this.
We may have to open up a few rooms.
Yeah, we could go somewhere else, it's fine.
There's, there's quite a bit going on in the fourteen. We can move the BCA at Danny's office, but I mean, this, okay.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna screw up.
Keep the, keep the rec committee on.
Let's keep, let's keep people going forward.
Okay.
I did reach out to GMP, I met the, the representative down at the ball fields, maybe the Wednesday or Thursday last week. They gave me a price to put up poles that will light up the playground and then the basketball courts, which, so they're gonna put in two poles and string wire and put up lights. The total on that is six thousand seventy-six dollars.
Per year? Or that's to put them in and then there's a monthly charge for a pole?
Monthly charge, I think it was fifty-two cents.
You know what?
It's like twelve dollars a lighter or something like that. The last time I remember it, the cost was twelve dollars a month, it's probably more than that now.
So, yeah, she gave me that price, I will ask the board to, to fund that in the next budget, it'll be on the all card list.
So that would, that would just, that would light the basketball courts and the area that the bathroom is in where a snack bar would.
So this, this is gonna do the play, you know where the new playground is?
Yeah.
And the basketball courts and we have, the town has two poles already, one between the restroom and the courts and then between the baseball diamond and the restroom, so we'll drop a couple of lights on those and Slate Valley Electric can do that for us and I'm waiting, I'm gonna get quotes for that.
As we're putting that funding in, we've got the lights, the cameras, are the schools' cameras and are they, do we need, my question is, in that funding one, do we need a camera too?
It's, it'll be part of it. I talked to Royal Glass and they're gonna help us, they're gonna, I'm getting quotes for this building and I'm getting quotes for down there, down at the park. We just, it's all about security.
With good lighting, good cameras, we should be able to take care of repeat offenders.
That's, that was my question of those three surveillance cameras that are already down there. Of those three surveillance cameras that are already down there, on the same pole, who surveils them? Who, who gets them? The school?
That's the school's cameras.
That's the school's cameras?
They'll work with the police chief if they can get an image.
Because the lighting is not sufficient, they can't determine anything at night. Is that my understanding?
That's exactly right. They have a nice camera on top of the building, too, that can see, now during the day, it reaches down and you, they can see all the way to the basketball courts. It's, it's, it's a nice camera. But at night, you just see the cellphone.
So when I was down there yesterday picking up all the garbage, I should've been smiling.
Should've been smiling and waving then.
Yeah, smiling, waving. Exactly.
So, one more thing. Down there where that bathroom trailer is, that handicap ramp is designed in such a way that no one can get in there and maintain it. So we're gonna have to get somebody to crawl underneath them ramps with a saw and saw off them weeds that are nine miles high. Did you take care of them today? Oh, this morning? Oh, good. Good. Perfect. I said, how are we ever gonna get in there and get them cut out of there? I, I'm confused why that thing can't move. It's a trailer. Well, the handicap ramps are just gonna be quite, it's quite a lot of work.
Yeah, before I, before I hook onto that, though, with all the trouble we've had with that trailer.
Well, we bought that thing.
We'll let things break in and bust. I know what we bought it with saying, we're gonna move it up to the park. That, that was the biggest pipe dream I've ever heard of. Not, not good enough shit. You'd be tearing it apart, a little more damage.
You got a sewer line that's kinda permanently hooked, it's gotta be unhooked every time it's moved. All the handicap ramps are all gotta be disassembled and taken off. It's not a five-minute job to hook on a trailer and drive away with it. Unfortunately, that's, that's what I was led to believe. Okay. Let's, let's make it work down there, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Good. Looking forward to hearing more from the Recreation Committee.
Yep. So maybe the rec committee, after, after the meetings, will have some, some goals, at least. Okay. All right. Let's go to new business then. Waterline inventory, RFP, did you talk about that already, or? No, you didn't.
Not yet.
Oh, that's right, it's here.
Yep. So I, we got three, three bids for this. This is the waterline inventory for the, the water lines that feed the, each of our customers. The state wants to know if there is lead in our, in those delivery lines, and if so, where is it at? So, we got three bids. One from Aldridge and Elliott, one from AES Northeast, and one from MSK Engineers. Aldridge and Elliott was the low bid at $89,500.
And, and how is A&Es?
This, so the state's paying for this entirely. They're offering a loan. They're offering a loan, I think we received something like $120,000, a $120,000 loan. A&E comes in at $89,000, $89,500, which is below that, that threshold. The loan is forgivable. So $120,000 in forgivable loan, A&E's below the $120,000 threshold, so this loan will pay for everything. Anything over $120 would be on our tab.
And do you have a recommendation? Do you have a recommendation, Mr.?
No, I would recommend A&E. They're very familiar with our system. They've been in town for, well, I don't know how long, since I've been here, which is only a few years.
They're the folks that are short of mine, correct?
They're the ones who did the sewer plant?
Yep. So they, they do good work, so I've.
I was gonna steal your cupcake there.
So, are you looking for a motion, Bob?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept Aldridge and Elliott's bid of $89,500, the lowest bidder, for the waterline inventory.
I'll second that. Everybody understand what we're doing, and how that's being paid for? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Well, what do we do?
That's wet and faulty.
So this project, I assume, would entail, they'd have to go into everybody's home, inspect the water lines, service going in, and.
In a lot of cases, yes.
Just confirm that there's no lead there. Yep. A lot of galvanizing. That's what I've got from the curfew to the, to the pump, or to the metering. Okay. So that's what we're doing there. Okay, water and sewer for Dunkin', Donuts, Dunkin'.
Donuts of Rutland, if you've been down Washington lately, heading towards Fourth Street, you'll see Dunkin' Donuts is broke ground on their, on their new building on Fourth and Washington. This is a request for, this is a connection permit application to allow them to connect our water and sewer system.
What's the fee on that?
$220, $250, $260 for this. An application fee, a recording fee, tapping, and then a service why inspection. They will have a $2 per gallon, one-time system fee, once the final approval comes through.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
And this is for the board chair.
Building Better Community Grant, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I'll fire it up, and then Glenn can give you the details. So Dunkin' of Rutland, which is the folks that are putting up the, the building here in Fairhaven, they're requesting $25,000 grant for energy, for energy-efficient construction. We talked to the president of the company, Laura. I'm, I'm sorry, Laura, I can't remember your last name to save myself.
Laura and Ron Walsh?
Yes, thank you. This project is gonna be energy-efficient, and they'll be getting a, what they call the, the DD Green Certificate. So Dunkin' Donuts has pretty stringent rules around these new, these new buildings that go up. So that way, they're energy-efficient, they're green. So that is their request.
And so what happens, how this process works, this is building, these Building Better Community Grants, we've done for the last four years. And that's, those are the ones like that, we've got sprinklers in down, some of the buildings downtown. We've done the brewery and before here. So it helps the businesses come along. And this, again, is the one, the first one for Donuts of Rutland, was the Economic Development Committee. This is for the maximum amount, $25,000, that they're asking for. It's about a little over $100,000 project. And it's really to help with stormwater runoff, really. The green for the outside, a lot of it's to help with the runoff issues.
And where is this funding coming from? Where is the funding coming from?
The, this is, it's, what we're doing as a board, asking you to approve their request for a state grant. So it's a, there's about, there's three different buckets. There's municipality, businesses, and, and, I know there's, I don't even know. But there's three different buckets, the money comes from. And this one is coming from, from the one for the businesses.
Yep. And essentially, us, the town, the municipality, essentially is the sponsor of the businesses that are requesting these grants.
So they look for, with their grant request, like we, as an economic development committee, if you approve it, we'd write a letter of support. We'd also show that the select board supports it. So whenever they can get letters of support, it makes their grant stronger.
Is it, is it essentially a pass-through, like we've done?
No, no exposure to our taxpayers, or?
I make a motion that we support it. Second? Your second? Several seconds? All?
Put, put him down.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Opposed.
Now, the, the second one is, there's the municipality, and the town of Fairhaven, which Joe has filled out a request. And it's a request for signs for businesses. Now, let you talk to that, I think you handed out, gave us a handout?
Sure. So this is a, this is a grant that the town would, the town would receive this grant. And it's to help our businesses put up the, what the state calls official business directional signs. Those kinda dark-colored ones with the little logo next door to it. Driving around the state, I see a lot of towns have these, these signs pretty much everywhere, and we have none anywhere. So I, the idea behind this is, now that we've got a brewery, we've got a bistro, we've got a winery, we now need to get people to those locations. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna reach out to, and I've talked to a few businesses already, I'm gonna reach out to those businesses. They'll supply the grant match for the project. I'll write the grant, and then the state, you know, knock on wood, they give us the other half to finish the project. So we're just kinda facilitating getting signs up for our businesses.
Curious, how much do signs like this run? Do you know?
It's, it's short money, honestly. It's a hundred, it's a hundred dollar setup fee, and I think it's $175 for, or $175 setup and an annual $100. So it's not very expensive.
The grant, the total grant, like I think Joe's putting in for is $7,500, yeah, so.
Who's responsible for maintenance? Is that a town function, or is it, do the businesses have to provide?
I think the state, I think the state does. They used to. That, with the original plan, we got rid of billboards a million years ago. These locations are real estate.
Right, exactly.
Right at the exit.
Right at the exits.
That's the way I imagine it, right at the exit, saying, you know, it's got to chill that way.
You can also put them, I've seen a lot of them in downtown areas, too.
Yeah, but the downtown ones probably fall on the town as far as maintenance, correct?
Not these, these are, these are state.
These'll also be state?
These, these are state, yeah.
Yeah, but even if they replace downtown?
There's a hundred dollar annual fee for maintenance that goes to the state. They maintain these. Yeah, no, this isn't gonna fall on Nate.
So, so the EDC approved this one and forwarded it to the short pool for your, your approval?
Well, then I move that we support this application for $75, $75,000 grant for directional signs.
Second? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. You sneaking anything else in there, or?
No, no, I'm looking, I'm looking at Dean.
I saw one, and then there's two. Okay, truck loan?
Yes. So this is the, the board approved the purchase of the truck back on 4/4/23. We received the truck two weeks ago, at, I think just for the last meeting. And this is the paperwork to, for the loan. So there's, there's tabs on there. If it says board, there should be a spot for the board to sign.
So you need, are you looking for a motion or just signatures?
Uh, I'll take a motion signature.
If we already approved it.
I was gonna say, the, the money was approved, so what do I?
I don't think we need, I think we just need to get formal here.
So I'll make a motion that we sign the contract for the truck.
There you go. Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. One more, which is the scrap.
Did you agree to sign?
That's the loan document.
The loan document for the new.
Paperwork for the loan for the truck.
For, for the new dump truck.
And then scrap?
Yep, for the scrap, the guys were cleaning up the yard Friday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? They found $1,972 in scrap. And we would like that amount deposited into the DPW Equipment Reserve Fund.
I make a motion, we do so. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any what fund?
Equipment Reserve Fund.
Oh, is there more than one place?
Yes, there's, there's, I think, I think there's three places. Every place that says board, yep.
Okay. We're good there. Oh, one thing before, I forget, Nate, and I said this to you guys privately, but the, the transfer station looks very good. Very good. It looks 100% better than it has in 100 years. And I'm not kidding, I'm not, you guys keep that up, it's, it's, we won't have any more trouble from the state, that's for sure. No, it looks, it looks, it's worth mentioning, it's worth mentioning. So you guys should be proud of that. That's, that's 100% turnaround. It's great. All right, let's move on. Anything in the parking lot? I can tell you that the zoning regs, he came back from his honeymoon today. I didn't get an email yet. I will get hold of him tomorrow. The town plan will begin the next meeting because nobody showed for the last meeting.
Nobody.
I don't know what happened. It was like, surprised somebody or something. I was, as a matter of fact, I didn't even think of it. I would, they had to call me, and, oh crap. So I ran up, but there wasn't anybody there, except Liz. Liz was there. And.
That's when you did the minutes for?
So the town plan will, will start, that review will start next Wednesday. Hopefully, we will have the parameters that the state needs for us from, from Rutland region by then. But we will have them soon. And we will have a clean copy of the zoning regs to, to give to you guys as well. I need to, I need to get in touch with Devon. Thank you, sir. Anything else in the? Just go around, Devon. There you go. We got just one thing from that parking lot there. We heard anything back from the, from the site up there for the new DPW garage? Have you, you touched base with anybody on that yet?
Uh, I, in fact, I called them before the meeting, you know, maybe about 3 o'clock. Didn't, didn't answer, I left a message.
Okay. Anything for roundtable? Yeah, I got a couple of things. You know, it's last year. We talked about town properties that we own, we own. I'd like to see that move forward somehow, some way, somehow. We need more tax base, and that's a, you know, it would help us, I think. I know it's been stagnant with everything that's been going on. I think we can do it to help move that along. I'd like to see it. Didn't you advertise those, or no?
No. No. Is that the, is that the, the ex folder, is that the folder from the Lister?
I have the folder for, I have all of them right here.
From the Lister?
Well, no, this is, this is what we, what we compiled.
Oh.
And I, the Lister does have all this.
She has my, she has my copies. I was just making sure with those.
But she also needed to do a lot of research, and was able to find time or something.
So the trouble with, with these properties to sell is, it'd be one thing if it was, there's a warranty deed that said, you know, the, the town owns it, go sell it. In a lot of cases, we took some of these properties for, for back taxes, or I couldn't even tell you how we got ahold of some of these properties. So it's a matter of digging through and making sure that we do have clear title to sell it. I'd hate to end up in another lawsuit because, you know, it's just a matter of research.
Well, maybe what we should do is cherry pick the most, most saleable ones. Maybe five. five saleable ones, and do the- and do the-
I know it's not all gonna happen at once, but I just, I don't wanna see it fall through the racks.
Yep. It does- does a tax deed not issue when we take the property for back taxes, or is there any- anything courted?
Some of these are ancient.
Ancient, okay.
That's the big problem.
They're all on website anyway, you can find them.
So, the one, just to give an example, um, what do we call that, the property down here on Prospect Street?
Outlet.
The old outlet.
Outlet property?
Somehow, we got ahold of a piece and that land had been sold and bought and subdivided, so the question is, when I'm looking at the tax map, is that the actual piece of land for sale? Um, and-
Essentially, we own the hill that's grass.
I believe you, I just- I need to be able- I need to be able to hold that piece of paper in my hand, and I'm- I'm not comfortable enough to say, yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, it- and, you know, the- the whole idea of that being of winning value is, 'cause I think if you dug into that, you'd find a lot of, and you'd-
Hold it. If you could, how many parcels are we talking about here?
What if we?
But some are like, just so you understand, some are, I don't know how you'd ever sell them, even if you found your deeds, like on Dutton Avenue, just before you got on the interstate, there's this little pie wedge that I- that's- that's- that's, I don't know-
It's a modern- it's a modern acre property.
About an acre that- that sits there, uh, right on the onr- I just don't know, I'm trying to envision anything being built there.
All right.
I mean, some, that's what I mean. You've really gotta cherry pick and get the most saleable ones, do those first, and then, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that we also need to establish titles at the moment.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and that, I think, is a project in and of itself.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I mean, if you took five and had to get, go through the- the title search for that, that might be a lot- that might be as costly as anything. And then we find out.
Yeah, clear title. But, yes, we shouldn't- we couldn't let it sit.
You said you have more than one, you know, thing for the roundtable?
Oh, um, but the other thing I have is Academy Street, the brush, Nate's aware of it, Joe's aware of it, and, um, just something we gotta deal with. I've had two complaints on it, and I didn't take the first one very seriously when they- when they re-complained to me, I really checked it out. There's a problem there. Nate looked at it today, right?
That letter went out to the homeowner this afternoon. So, we'll give them time to clear it up, and if they don't, we'll take care of it.
I'll send it to Massey on it.
You did a great job.
Did he do that himself?
Yeah.
Nothing to add? Um, I understand that Ruby's soft opening is tomorrow at, uh, and, uh, it was- it's tomorrow.
Invitation only, or is it?
That was what- that was what was on, uh, one of the Facebook pages, so, um, so, I just wish them all the best, and I look for-
It was signed here, so it's open yesterday.
Really? Okay, well, I look forward to-
Well, then they're just doing top open.
Ruby's Bistro. I look forward to trying them out, and I wish them all the- all success.
Apologies for being late. Uh, I don't wanna rehash anything that I might have missed, I don't know how many folks were present for the recreation discussion. Nobody was present. So, one thing I do know, uh, there was an individual that could not be here, that wanted to be, and they- they expressed that as, uh, you know, I think Josh Markey is, uh, heading up some, capturing some donations to see if we can, uh, put some lights down there, and their thinking is, gee, if we- if we go to light up the ball field, it would be a good idea to light up the basketball courts as well. And, uh, the more- the more that we can highlight the things to do, I think that would be, uh, uh, less of a temptation to be destructive down there. Um, so, a kind of positive reinforcement on the- the assets we have down there. Outside of that, I- I don't have anything today.
Joe had, just so you know, Joe- Joe has looked in there, talked to GMP about, you know, the basketball court and the playground. And it was around six grand.
Seven, I think.
Or seven grand, under seven grand.
I'm sorry, six- I'm sorry, six thousand, seventy-six.
Okay. Six thousand. So, that's something we'll look at for-
During budget.
Budget time. Yeah, so that's what we're- and donating to- that would be the way to go, to light the fields, and we can afford to lighten or pay the light bill after that. We will definitely do that.
Actually, if I could make one comment on that. Um, we were talking before about how, um, how some of the rec improvements, it's an item that we're gonna be budgeting for next year. Uh, I'm wondering if maybe we should focus, at least in the short term, on how much of a cost we would need to improve, we could get from grants or from private donations or private corporate donations, because I think at that point, um, I mean, I would love to be able to make all these improvements without having to dip into the purse, um, but, uh, and I think that that's something we should be researching now.
Stewart's- Stewart's does community grants, uh, and they- they, I can't remember if it was the lights at the high school, they really went to bat, they dumped some money there, and they- they have a finite amount of money that they play with, and we haven't tapped that.
Right. I know a number of equipment manufacturers also have programs where they'll donate to communities, and so, that would solve a lot of the, you know, the issues, we've heard about that, so.
Um, I sent everybody something about the- the substation improvement, did you see?
I saw them.
Okay, so, if anybody needs to, I've got hard copies up, if anybody wants to look at that.
Yeah.
There's, um, some drawings and there's some pictures and just general-
Now, they're moving the substation from down near the- the basketball courts, they're moving it, where are they moving it to?
Um, that's the one question I would have, but they're putting it on the other side of the, sorry, I'm gonna say, the new road.
I- I learned that one already.
So, off- off Airport Road, through the- through the underpass and-
Where those cornfields used to be, just before you get up to Dog Park.
Yeah, yeah, so, in that area sometimes. Um, it will be long overdue for this town, but it- it essentially triples the capacity, so, and it's compliant with everybody else around us, we're just the last ones to get it. And it gets them out of the wetland, or out of a floodland, so, that's a big deal for them. And it helps the solar field, so, it's- it's kind of a win-win. And it would be, if that other proj- project ever comes to fruition, it would be nice to have that.
Face the power there.
That face the power for that win, so.
Absolutely.
So, anyways, that's a good one to keep an eye on, and that's all I got. You got some financial reports?
Yes, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the general warrant for forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That should be mentioned. What was- what was the total?
Oh, it's- it's one of the lowest general warrants, I- I've looked at it twice, the forty-five seven dollars, which was very good.
Forty-seven, it's seven- it's seven thousand dollars more than the payroll, that's not bad.
I was shocked, too.
The checkbook status is nine hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
All right. And we have an executive session added.
Motion to go in the executive session?
For personnel?
For personnel? Is that it? Is that all?
We added the other- the other, what was that, one?
Well, I- it looked like it, personnel, uh, under one DSA, three thirteen A three. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.